Cold weather with brand-new winter coats courtesy of the LAPD.
I like it's comfortable, it's furry. I like this jacket because it's so warm. When it's cold, I'm gonna wear it.
It's warm, it looks nice. Thank you to the police. Because I never got a jacket like this. I never knew cops would give you guys sweaters.
Officer Jerome Divinity started the program seven years ago. He remembers one very cold day when he was making his patrol rounds at an elementary school in his South LA beat.
7 o'clock in the morning, it's freezing outside. It's misting a little bit. So I asked this one young lady, I said, sweetheart, where's your jacket? And she says, today is my sister's day to wear the jacket. I said, well, how many sisters do you have? And she says, three. And that really, really touched me.
The cops are giving away about 700 coats at three different elementary schools this week. About 200 of those coats are going right here to 109th Street School. For the kids, that's cause for celebration.
Because we have a sweater and it's warm. Because I like this sweater and it's warm because it's so soft.
Officer Divinity's nonprofit group, Inside-Outside Communication Foundation, gives away the coats. It depends on donations from the community and local businesses. Anyone wanting to donate can visit www.iocfoundation.com. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week. By the way, donations to that foundation are tax deductible. While one group of LAPD officers gave away coats, another gave away toys at a hip-hop dance party. But the kids had to make a promise to the officers first. Gil Reyes explains.
I pledge...
I pledge...
...to say no...
To say no...
...to crime...
To crime.
Students from Eggermont School in Chatsworth saying no to drugs, gangs, crime, and bullying. And what did they receive for reciting this pledge? A pep rally between classes with dancing, hula-hooping. The children also go home with free toys and bicycles.
All they have to do is every kid in the school recites the pledge and we respond with a rally. It's the best way to reach the kids. It's all in interacting with the youth and teaching them the importance of saying no to these things. So in the future, they'll live better, healthier lives.
The party sponsored by the Los Angeles Police Baseball Team Foundation. President, LAPD officer, and yes, rapper, Michael Scott, says it's all part of community policing. It's the foundation's 10th pep rally.
The interaction between the youth and the police officer is very important. So with these rallies, I get to do that. I get to hand a kid a toy and actually see the response. And I know they'll remember that moment.
And hopefully remember to live up to their promises well into adulthood. Donations make the giveaways possible. Eggermont School President Tina Struvi says reinforcing good behavior makes it all worthwhile.
So being able to include this program in all different schools where the students can actually say no to the things that are so detrimental to our society is really important.
One, two, three. Yeah!
Now, the foundation holds events like this one at least once a month throughout the entire school year. They'd like to hold more, of course, pending more interest from the community. In Chatsworth, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Schools interested in booking a rally or to make donations, you can do so at lapdbasballteam.com. While over on the East Side, police officers are working on a different kind of approach to help tackle gangs and other issues. They've teamed with USC's School of Social Work to provide free services while offering students some much-needed experience. Gil Reyes has more.
Thank you for coming.
With Crime City wide up in recent years, LA's mostly Latino East Side neighborhoods struggle with their own challenges.
So we're looking at not only gangs, we're also domestic violence, child abuse.
Rosemary Alamo, Clinical Associate Professor at USC, hopes to tackle these problems in a totally different way, establishing a partnership between her USC-Dwarren Peck School of Social Work and the Hollenbeck Police Station in Boyle Heights. Here, a total of 10 master-level social work USC interns will help the department provide services to families in crisis, and at no cost.
To include motivational interviewing, problem-solving therapy, cognitive behavior therapy. So basically, they are able to provide individual counseling, group counseling.
They're not going to be out in the field, but the bulk of this program is the interns working with our pals' kids, our Police Activities League's kids, which is about 1,000 families that we work with. And it's really part of adding a layer of service to help out our families in the community.
The interns will volunteer 16 hours a week at the station for school credits and real-world experience, working with officers to solve problems in largely Spanish-speaking neighborhoods.
We're able to see the social work perspective and the criminal justice perspective and meshing the both and understanding where both of us are coming from. And from there, we address the needs of the individual.
I'm going to guess it comes in handy being bilingual.
It definitely comes in handy, especially here in the city of Los Angeles. You know, given my previous experience, there's not a lot of clinical social workers that are bilingual. So having that ability helps me better serve the community as well.
And this marks the first time that the LAPD, or any other law enforcement agency for that matter, has teamed up with a school of social work to deter local crime. The LAPD officials here at Hollenbeck hope to roll out the program to other parts of the city as well. In Boyle Heights, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Hollenbeck Division also serves the largely Spanish-speaking communities of Lincoln Heights and El Serino. Well, residents in a public housing project in West LA are getting proactive about food, justice, and their own health by exercising their green thumb. Anna Marcos takes a look at the Mar Vista Community Garden, and she's right on time for the harvest. In the middle of this urban housing project grows a healthy garden full of organic vegetables. The residents of Mar Vista Gardens are hard at work in their community garden. Once a week, they harvest the produce and split it up for members in the community. It's healthy and it's free.
It's a community garden. It's not private. It's a community. And we are all like a family. The people that come here, we help each other.
These are some of the fruits of the garden. They're called chayote, which is a form of squash. And this garden is so abundant that in the last three months of the growing season, residents have been able to harvest 300 of these chayote squash.
We pick them and we like put them kind of like in a bundle and we share them to everybody.
And while squash, cilantro, lima beans, lettuce, and Swiss chard are growing right now, tomatoes, carrots, and other garden goodies also grow here in season. And look at this kale tree. It's almost as tall as the guy who's grown it.
It's good for the body. You don't need the meat.
The garden was started three years ago by the Roots for Peace Program and by local high school students who were learning about food justice and the lack of healthy, organic produce in poor communities. Since then, the residents have taken over and kept the garden growing.
We need fresh vegetables, organic vegetables. We don't, for buying the market, it's too expensive.
I think it's extremely important for public housing residents, which are, which everyone is low-income and mostly people of color as well, to be able to have access to good, organic food that doesn't have, is not GMOs and is not contaminated with pesticides.
Organizers in the Roots for Peace Program are working to spread organic community garden throughout LA's urban landscape.
I am healthy because I've been eating this almost about three years.
So like, you're like Popeye now?
Yeah.
Yep. This kid shows us his Popeye arms to prove it. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week. For more information on the Roots for Peace Program, visit rootsforpeace.blogspot.com. Well, are you a business owner in Los Angeles? If you are, you may have an opportunity to land a contract with one of the largest entities in the city. Rasha Goel explains.
1,200 local business owners recently took advantage of networking and learning about possible opportunities they will have to participate in contracts for construction of the LAX Land Site Access Modernization Program, known as LAMP.
It is a $5.5 billion program that will build the train to LAX. And this will be a two-and-a-quarter-mile automated people mover. It will have three on-airport stations and will extend essentially off-airport to be anchored by a new consolidated rent-a-car facility, as well as a connection to the region's metro system. So it's incredibly exciting.
LAUAR recently held the LAMP Business Opportunities Forum to provide local businesses with an opportunity to find out about upcoming projects, as well as network with contractors that are planning to participate in the selection process.
I'm really excited that LAX is playing a huge, significant role in really forcing the primes and small businesses to connect.
We're going to create more than 121,000 annual jobs and generate over $7.6 billion in labor income and more than $20 billion in business revenue.
LAUAR was the initiator of the city's new Local and Local Small Business Enterprise Program Ordinance, which went into effect in November 2016. This ordinance ensures that local businesses have the opportunity to participate in large projects.
Many different industries will have an opportunity to participate in the program. So we're focused on making sure that we communicate as much as we can about the project and the program.
The overall LAMP project is designed to relieve traffic congestion with the central terminal area and on surrounding streets, as well as improve the travel experience. It is expected to be completed by 2023. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
80 million passengers are expected to travel through LAX this year. Well, here's a chance to bone up on your sonnets and couplets. A Shakespeare exhibit just took to the stage at the LA Public Library. Anna Marcos has more. So what do the timeless Shakespeare and former U.S. President Abe Lincoln have in common? Turns out, plenty. It's just one of many fascinating historical tidbits that you'll find at the LA Public Library's Shakespeare Exhibit.
Of course, the infamous John Wilkes Booth, assassin of President Lincoln, was a Shakespearean actor who Lincoln would have seen perform.
The Shakespeare exhibit, called America's Shakespeare: The Bard Goes West, helps mark the 400th anniversary of Shakespeare's death. It's a joint effort by the LA Public Library and Library Foundation and the Folgers Shakespeare Library, the largest collection of Shakespeare memorabilia in the world. And apparently, some of the exhibits even have a little Southern California flavor.
One thing that we were really interested to learn is that Hermosa Beach was first called Shakespeare Beach. When the red car trains opened there in 1906, the developers thought it would be a writer's colony, so they named all the streets after writers.
Students, scholars, history and costume buffs, writers, actors, and just plain old bard-loving folks will all find something to like as they revel in both Shakespearean masterpieces and Shakespearean trivia, and maybe brush up on their iambic pentameter. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week. Well, you can see the Shakespeare exhibit at the LA Public Library until February 26th. For more information, visit shakespeare.lfla.org. While visitors to LA's iconic Hollyhock House may feel a bit cosier upon entering, just as the original owner did nearly a century ago. An exact copy of her favorite sculpture is now displayed for all to see. Gil Reyes has more from Hollyhock House. Gil?
Yes, Yana, very exciting. A replica of the original piece of artwork that once graced here at LA's legendary Hollyhock House is now in a part of the house where original owner Aileen Barnes Dahl would have wanted it to be. The sculpture, A Roman Marble Relief, now sits in the house's entrance, in the loggia. It's exactly where the former owner placed the original work back in the early 1920s.
And what it does ultimately is it gives the visitor a sense of a place that is inhabited instead of just a formal museum.
Hollyhock curator Jeffrey Herr, referring to the work entitled "Three Dancing Nymphs." It's an exact replica of the original, a sculpture that former homeowner Aileen Barnes Dahl once called, quote, "The thing I most love, except for my relatives." The artwork was said to instantly relax the oil heiress upon entering.
It left when she did in 1927. It's had some, an interesting history. And right now, the original can be seen at the Getty Museum in Brentwood. But we have, through technology, been able to reproduce it using 3D scanning and 3D printing.
The Hollyhock House, built by famed architect Frank Lloyd Wright, reopened in 2015 after years of renovation. City officials say plans to restore the motor court and other parts of the property are planned.
We're bringing back Hollyhock House, one piece at a time, back to its original incarnation.
In East Hollywood, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The Hollyhock House is open for public tours Thursdays through Sundays. Well, turning now to a huge birthday bash, as the LA Zoo celebrated 50 candles on its birthday cake over the holidays. The festivities included animal parades, cake, and some strange creatures. Anna Marcos takes us there. Lots of people in pointy hats flooded the gates at the LA Zoo. The event, called Zoo Libration, marked the zoo's 50th birthday. All sorts of beasts, both real and fantastical, marked the event in style: twirling, strutting, prancing, or just looking for some birthday goodies to munch on. And take a look at this birthday cake, or this one, at least what's left of it. It seems everyone got goodies, both the two-legged mammals and the four-legged kind.
The black bear was eating the buds off its cake.
It was made out of paper mache, but they put like what they eat on it. For the black bear, they put mealworms, grapes, and seeds. And for the bear, they put vegetables.
We will be having some special feedings for our tigers, our gorillas.
Special feedings, an animal parade, a children's petting zoo. It was easy to forget the zoo also has a very serious mission: to teach future generations about animal conservation. Zookeepers have helped bring back and raise endangered or threatened species, like the prong-horned antelope and the California condor.
Technologies that we develop here, simply caring for the animals that live here, are now being used more and more by field biologists and researchers to save animals in the field.
They do good education, they talk about conservation and the condor program. So it's a great way for the kids to learn what they need to carry on.
In spite of the serious business of running a zoo, the party isn't over. In fact, it will be a year long. The LA Zoo will hold 50th Anniversary Zoo Libration events all year. But for this bear at least, it looks like the party is over, except for the paper mache. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week. For more information on Zoo Libration events and the zoo's 50th anniversary, visit zoolibrations50.org. And even more celebrations just down the street, as Griffith Park marked its own anniversary. Rasha Goel was there as the park turned 120 years old.
Griffith Park recently celebrated its 120th anniversary. Among the attendees was former Councilman Tom Labonge, who has had his own personal memories at the park.
All eight Labonge boys grew up within walking distance and hiking distance of Griffith Park. I learned to swim in the Griffith Park pool. I remember the area before the freeway was built in the 50s. I can't tell you all the stories, all the dates I used to take here to Griffith Park.
The celebration included rides on the historic merry-go-round, live jazz music, and a raw climbing wall, amongst other activities.
But I think it's very much more important that we preserve, to the best of our ability, our jewels like Griffith Park.
Griffith Park is named after Colonel Griffith J. Griffith, who deeded the original land to the city of Los Angeles for use as a public park.
Griffith Park is one of the largest urban parks in North America and spreads over 4,000 acres. It's definitely a popular location. In fact, in 2011, it was one of the busiest destinations for on-location filming. According to Film LA, the park was booked for 346 production days.
Griffith Park is also a popular family spot. After all, you can explore the trains at Travel Town Museum or explore the heavens from Griffith Observatory.
I love Griffith Park. I come here when I can.
They have this great giant piece of public land for everyone to come and spend their time in. We got golf courses, we got a carousel, we got the zoo, there's all kinds of stuff. It's great.
Griffith Park's 120th birthday holds a special place in the hearts of millions, including mine. In Los Angeles, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
By the way, Griffith Park's merry-go-round inspired Walt Disney to create Disneyland. Well, a new recycling program puts the city on the road to cleaner air for us all. A major thoroughfare in Pacoima becomes a great street, and another community garden is about to take root. All these stories in City B. The city of Los Angeles recently adopted an ambitious new program to expand recycling services to every business and resident within the city. With the goal of reducing waste going to landfills by 1 million tons annually by the year 2025, officials say Zero Waste LA will dramatically reduce greenhouse gas and air pollution emissions by expanding recycling services and opportunities, mandating clean fuel, low-emission vehicles, and more efficient truck routing. Immediate direct benefits to customers will include a reduction in traffic congestion, consistent and equitable rates, and improved customer service. The $3.5 billion, 10-year Zero Waste LA program is set to launch this summer and will invest more than $200 million in new and improved solid waste infrastructure. Community members and business leaders gathered to celebrate completion of a Great Streets project for Van Nuys Boulevard in the heart of Pacoima. These improvements mark the latest milestone in the Great Streets initiative and include high-visibility pedestrian crossings, buffered and protected bike lanes, and street resurfacing. In 2014, the Pacoima stretch of Van Nuys Boulevard running from Laurel Canyon to San Fernando Road was selected as one of the first 15 Great Street corridors. Since then, Van Nuys Boulevard has seen the launch of an entrepreneur center, an outdoor art museum, and 11,000 square feet of reconstructed sidewalk. All of these improvements are aimed at enhancing Van Nuys Boulevard as an economic, cultural, and transportation hub.
Culture is one of the most amazing gifts that we have in the city of Los Angeles, and it is represented in every one of our communities. And our job is to foster that creativity everywhere.
In an effort to promote sustainable communities through urban gardening, Council District 13 announced a partnership with the Department of Recreation and Parks, the Los Angeles Community Garden Council, and the local community to fund a Madison Avenue Community Garden. The Los Angeles Community Garden plans to build the community garden on the back half of the property located at 1175 Madison Avenue and construct a 640-square-foot educational building on site. Council District officials say gardens make communities healthier and provide a place to de-stress from everyday life. The $600,000 project should be completed by the end of the year. An art exhibit highlights the power of photography. A popular food market offers mouth-watering culinary delights. And some of the best drummers beat it out during a drum-off contest. All this and this week's Things to Do. The International Photographic Art Exposition, also known as Photo LA, announces its 26th edition. Photo LA carries on its mandate to exhibit both traditional and contemporary art galleries and private dealers from around the globe. Photo LA continues the discourse on photography's place in the world of fine art, providing a distinctive platform for the display of everything, from vintage masterworks from the 19th and 20th centuries to contemporary photography, new techniques, and new forms of presentation, as well as video and multimedia installations. By hosting more than 80 prestigious exhibitors and over 10,000 visitors comprised of collectors, curators, dealers, and lovers of fine art, Photo LA has developed a distinguished reputation, ranking it among the top photography fairs in the world. The fair takes place January 13 through the 15th at the La Mart. For more, visit photoala.com. Smorgasburg launched in May of 2011 as a spinoff of Brooklyn Flea, a popular Brooklyn flea market. It returns with a plate of new flavors for the discerning LA crowd. Find dozens of exciting food vendors each Sunday at Smorgasburg, plus sophisticated shopping, craft, style, vintage, wellness, and more. Cultural events, pop-ups, and other surprise experiences will also be part of the market mix, transforming the vast site into a unique destination for the region. Take a bite of LA on Sunday, January 15th, at Alameda Produce Market in downtown LA. For more, visit la smorgasburg.com. The search for the top undiscovered drummer heats up during the Guitar Center's Drum-Off Finals. After making it through the preliminary rounds, the top five undiscovered drummers will hit the stage at the Novo at LA Live to compete for the Drum-Off title. The Drum-Off competition was developed to inspire and support drummers in the pursuit of their musical aspirations. Drum-Off is committed to rewarding and recognizing talent by providing a launching pad for a professional career as a drummer. The finale takes place on Saturday, January 14th, at the Novo at LA Live. For more, visit drumoff.guitarcenter.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
MyLA311 is an easy-to-use mobile phone app, available from the App Store or on Google MyLA311 links Angelenos with the services and information they need to enjoy their city, beautify their community, and stay connected with their local government. Find the nearest fire station, library, or even senior citizen center. Request graffiti removal. Request graffiti removal.
Good morning, and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, January 11. We are streaming live on Channel 35 as well as on the Internet. Mr. Clerk, if we can please go ahead and call the roll.
Blumenfeld, Bonn, Buscagno, Sadio, Englander, Harris, Tossen, Weezer, Coetzal, Coran, Martinez, Ferrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. Ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
Great, thank you very much. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right. Mr. Blumenfeld moves, Mr. Bonn in seconds. Next items, please.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Coetzal moves, and Mr. Price seconds. Next item, please.
Mr. President, there is a request to continue items 2 through 8 to January 18. Item 1R to January 25. Item 1P to February 8. Item 1B to January 25. Further, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that council receive and file items 1A, 1D, 1F, 1H, 1K, 1L in as much as the liens have been paid in full, and that council receive and file item 1N in as much as it was determined to be an owner-occupied single-family dwelling, and thus exempt from lien processing.
Okay, then that'll be the order without objection. Thank you very much. Next items, please.
Very good, sir. Items 1 through 9 are items noticed for public hearing.
All righty, and do we have cards on those?
Mr. President, we do have cards on item 1. Items 2 through 8 were continued to January 18. That leaves 9 before you for a vote.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the ones without cards. Close the roll and tabulate the vote. We'll keep the roll open for a moment. Okay, there we go. Tabulate the vote. Thank you very much. Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 10 through 30 are items which public hearings have been held. A committee report for item 30 has been posted and distributed for council's consideration.
Okay, and several ordinances on those as well. Colleagues, do we have any specials? Ms. Martinez.
Can we hold item 12 for Mr. Weezer?
Okay. Any other items, colleagues?
Question on 14, Mr. President. Item 14?
Mr. Buscagno for 14. We'll go ahead and hold item 30 as well. Any other items, colleagues? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the roll on the remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week for a second read unless reconsidered later today with 12 members.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, and Ms. Martinez, did you still have another question? I know your name's on the board. You're good? That's good. Okay, so, next items, please.
Mr. President, items 31 through 45 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we'll ask for us to open the vote for consideration on those items. Close the vote and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
All righty, thank you very much. Those items are now before us.
Mr. President, we do have cards on items 31, 41, 42, 43, 44, and 45.
All right, so the remaining items, colleagues, we'll go ahead and... Any specials on those? We'll hold... And we're going to hold the closed session items as well, 46, 47, 48, and 49. Okay, and we'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you so much. Next items, please.
And again, those ordinances will go over one week for second consideration unless reconsidered later today with 12. Mr. President, that brings us to items 46 through 49. They're items scheduled for a closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Yeah, those we'll go ahead and hold on the desk. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment for items not on today's agenda.
Okay, let's go ahead and... Before we go into presentations, Ms. Martinez.
Are we on? I'd like to reconsider item 38 from yesterday's council agenda. It's council filed 130487-S3 for an amendment.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration from yesterday's item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Okay, did you wish to... Has the amendment been circulated?
Yes. It hasn't.
Okay. We can wait. We'll hold it on the table and come back to it later. Okay, no problem. All right, with that, let's go ahead and go over to presentations. So, Councilmember O'Farrell, the floor is yours for a special presentation. For an artsy presentation.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues, and Happy New Year to everyone. The month of January is Arts Month in Los Angeles. I am honored to take this opportunity to recognize Scott Diamond, the president, Kim Martindale, the producer, and Robert Samuel from the L.A. Art Show, which kicks off tomorrow at the L.A. Convention Center. How about a big round of applause for these gentlemen, the Art Show and Arts in L.A.? The Art Show embraces its role as the region's preeminent art fair and emerges as the annual civic celebration of the visual arts here in Los Angeles. The show features painting, sculpture, works on paper, installations, photography, video, performance art, and panels, panel discussions. Over 70,000 people attend the L.A. Art Show each year, making it the largest on the West Coast and the fourth-largest in the United States. This is the 22nd year that the L.A. Art Show has been in the Los Angeles area. It has called the L.A. Convention Center its home for the last six years in a row. L.A. has well-established its reputation as one of the premier art and cultural centers in the world, and we cannot announce that truth enough. L.A. is a culture and arts destination the world over. Art galleries from over 18 different countries participate in the L.A. Art Show, and the show itself brings tens of millions of dollars in economic activity to our city. There is involvement from major Southern California museums and institutions such as LACMA, Mocha, the Broad Museum, the Getty, and the Autry Museum. And on the heels of yesterday's announcement about the Lucas Museum coming to Los Angeles near the USC campus, I think this is a great day to celebrate this involvement. As I mentioned, L.A. Art Show runs beginning tomorrow, Thursday through Sunday, January 12 through the 15th. And more great news is the proceeds from the opening night benefit St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. So I want to give a special thank you to St. Jude's Children's Research Hospital, China Cultural Medical Group Limited, National Base for International Cultural Trade Shanghai, and then Kim Te Ho. For more information about the L.A. Art Show, and it is an incredible place to visit and an experience, can be found at www.laartshow.com. Now, to say a few words, I'd like to bring forward producer of the L.A. Art Show, Mr. Kim Martindale. Kim?
Thank you. It's a pleasure and honor to be here and represent the Los Angeles Art Show in council chambers and before the council. It's been 22 years we produce the show, and it's been exciting to see the changes in Los Angeles through those 22 years and the development. We moved to the L.A. Convention Center six years ago, and every year since then, we've had more and more guests from more international countries, as well as Southern California. And it's exciting to be part of this dynamic growth that L.A.'s having in the arts. As I fly around the world to art shows all over the place, I just hear more and more about L.A.'s the center, where some of the major artists now that are coming out are based here in Los Angeles. Many galleries are moving here to Los Angeles. So it's exciting and wonderful to be part of that growth, and may the L.A. Art Show continue to be a center focal point of L.A. Arts Month in January. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. As Chair of our city's Arts, Parks, and L.A. River Committee, it gives me great pleasure to honor the creative sector and the organizers of the L.A. Art Show that so well represent the vibrant art and cultural metropolis that Los Angeles has become. So, on that note, congratulations, gentlemen, and let's have a successful 2017 L.A. Art Show from Thursday through Sunday. Thank you.
All right, congratulations again, and we're fortunate to have it. I think it's going to be phenomenal. Looking forward to the exhibits.
And, Mr. President, if you'll indulge me one second. Tonight, Wednesday, tonight is the big St. Jude's opening. So it's open to the public, so in a sense, the art show really begins tonight, but it is the St. Jude's benefit. But the art show will be available tonight for that celebration and that fundraiser. So all are welcome tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. By the way, I'll be there tonight with my daughter, so she wanted to go as well as I did. So we'll see you tonight. Thank you so much. Looking forward to it. All right, we'll turn the floor over to Councilmember Mike Bonn for a special presentation as well.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good morning, colleagues. This hi-def TV thing up here is a little jarring. Today, I'm going to just not look at that at all. Today, I am proud to be standing here today to say goodbye to a city employee and one of the best ones that we've had for a very long time here in the City of Los Angeles. For more than two and a half decades, Rob Hancock has served the people of Los Angeles and has served them extremely and exceptionally well as an engineering geologist in the Bureau of Engineering's Geotech Engineering Group. Rob has worked on some of the most interesting and challenging projects in Los Angeles's modern history. He managed the Geotech investigations for the East Central Interceptor Sewer, which is an 11-mile-long, large diameter tunnel that extends from the north end of Baldwin Hills across the Los Angeles Basin to the L.A. River. He responded to the damage after the 1994 Northridge earthquake, and he managed repair projects for many of our city facilities. And in my district, which is one of the reasons that I'm so proud to be able to honor him today, is Rob has been involved as one of the leaders and the driving forces in the investigation and the repair of landslides throughout the Pacific Palisades. The Tremonta Landslide, the Porto Marina Landslide, the Asilomar Landslide, but perhaps most notably, Petrerro Canyon. He began his work as manager of the Petrerro Canyon Project in 2007, and this project is a tremendous undertaking. It is a vision for a park and a riparian corridor for Pacific Palisades that has been in the works since Marvin Browdy sat over there. It has been going on for 30 years, and we are going to get it done in the next couple of years. Rob doesn't want to stick around and wait... There you are. Rob doesn't want to stick around and wait for us to finish, but he is going to come, and he's going to be enjoying it when we do it. Because of Rob's work, I'm hopeful that very, very soon, people in the Palisades and all over the place will be able to enjoy the park and the riparian habitat that will connect the communities with the beach. I'm proud to stand here with Rob and to thank him for his service, and I'm also glad that his wife, Lori, could be with him here today. We often talk about how we are a city family, and Rob and his wife take that quite literally. Lori is a member of the city family who has worked for the CAO's office for 30 years. She is also a senior administrative analyst, and I found out just like two and a half minutes ago that she is also retiring today as well. Is that correct? Yes? Stand here in the spotlight, then. They didn't give me any talking points to talk about Lori, and we only have a framed certificate for Rob, but we're getting one for you as well. Absolutely, no, equal time in the family. And so they're going to be going off and enjoying retirement together. Before I hand it over to Gary Lee Moore to say a few things, I think it's indicative of how grateful the residents of the City of Los Angeles are for Rob's service, that there's four folks here who... there's four folks here who came down from Pacific Palisades and Santa Monica Canyon to thank him for his service. And I'm glad to see that Gil Dembo is here, and Stuart Mueller, and George Wolfberg, and I believe Dave Card is with us as well. Yes, I see Dave on the big screen up there behind me. And folks in my community just love Rob and rave about him and thank him for his work. So I want to wish him the very best. And before I present the certificate, I would like to invite Gary Lee Moore to come on up and say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Bonin. Councilmembers, it is wonderful to be here to celebrate Rob's retirement and also Lori's retirement. We're joined by many of his friends from the Bureau of Engineering, specifically the Geotechnical Engineering Division. I think two things for me sum up Rob's career, and that is, one, his client service. He built these relationships with the fire department and the city attorney. After the rains, I knew where to find Rob. He'd be driving around the city with the fire department and looking at the possible slides that happened in the area. And that teamwork is what we're all about in the city, is whenever there's a disaster, whenever there's a problem, we partner together. Rob really led those efforts with the fire department. Secondly, with the city attorney's office. He has built such a strong relationship in that office, working together to minimize impacts on all the residents of Los Angeles. And finally, the other thing, I'd describe Rob as a mentor. So many people have had the pleasure to work for Rob during his time here, 25 and a half years with the Bureau of Engineering, and they've come out so much more knowledgeable and are helping around the bureau. And finally, I just want to say about Lori. Lori, working for the CAO, they met here in the city, and I'm prejudiced to that because I met my wife in the city. So I love when couples meet in the city. And Lori's been a liaison for us on our Sixth Street Viaduct project, and her leadership and making us better is so much appreciated, Lori. And I wish you both the happiest of retirements, and thank you, Councilman Bonin, for this recognition for them.
So I didn't want, once I found out that Lori was also retiring today, I didn't want this moment to go by without some love for her. So I've been sending some red alert texts to Miguel, and I'm glad to see that Ramon from the CAO's office is here to be able to say a few words of thanks and appreciation for her as well.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Ramon Soto with the CAO's office in the Municipal Facilities Group. I would just like to say that I'm just so happy for Lori for all the service that she's provided, the city administrative officer. Lori joined us in 2007, so you've been with our office for about 10 years now. This after a 30-year career, which Lori spent at DOT and at CDD, so I'd like to thank you for that. At the CAO's office, she's done just a tremendous job with the bridge program. And right now, we're going to be missing her at a very critical time because we're just getting into crunch time on the Sixth Street Bridge, which is the longest bridge in the city. But Lori, you've done a fantastic job in getting it to where we are now. We're very, very grateful to you and wish you the best in your future endeavors, your future travels. Thank your husband for sharing you with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have this to present to you, Rob, and we will be doing one for Lori, and we will mail it to whichever exotic locale you're going to be visiting. We'll do a quick photo here, and then you can—
All right, let's everybody give them another round of applause and a thank you and gratitude for all your dedicated years of service. I truly, truly appreciate it. Look at that army behind you. That's a—
And either of you would like to say a few words?
That's a testament.
The city of Los Angeles is a marvelous place to work. I've enjoyed all of my 25 years here, and what really makes it special is the support and the help you get from the people you see behind me. Councilman Bonin's staff is excellent to work with. They're very supportive, and Petrerro Canyon wouldn't be where it is today without them. And we're just about ready to start construction. I'd like to thank my coworkers, and especially like to thank the Citizens Advisory Committee, Petrerro Canyon Citizens Advisory Committee, who also have been really supportive through this. And the last thing I think I'd like to say is that—
Mention your son.
My— My son is here, his girlfriend, son Sean, and who sat around many dinner tables and listened to what's—the city, what's going on in the city. Anyway, the wonderful thing about the city is there's a lot of great employees here, and it's time for Lori and I to move over and give some of the younger people behind me an opportunity to move up and enjoy the city career that we had. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Colleagues, we're going to go ahead and turn our attention back over to the agenda for a moment. Item 14, we'll take up item 14. If we can go ahead and open the roll on item 14. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, that's approved. Thank you very much. On item 38 from yesterday's agenda for Ms. Martinez—
Wait, wait, wait. I have three. Tighten up.
We'll come back to that. Actually, we're not ready for that yet. Clerk's got to pull it in, so we'll come back to that. Let's go ahead and reconsider all the ordinances that were up today. So let's bring those back for reconsideration first, if we can open the roll for reconsideration on those.
And, Mr. President, those would be items 10, 11, 32 through 35, and 38 through 40.
All right, colleagues, so we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
All right, and so those items are now before us. We'll go ahead and open the roll to re-vote on those. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Those are approved. Thank you very much. So we're going to go to the multiple speaker cards first, and so let's go ahead and go to those items first. Item 1, item 31, item 44, and 49. 1, 31, 44, and 49.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn, and I am running for the office of mayor. That's a disclosure. I want to ask just quickly about item number 10 and 11. Is item number 11—I did sign up for item number 11.
Public hearing had already been held.
But this is to do with the consenting—
Stick to the item that you filled out, and that public comment wasn't held yet.
Well, it's a very important item, sir, and you lost in the Supreme Court.
Okay, you're not on topic, so you're going to forfeit your time if you get one more warning. You know the rules. That's your last warning. Did you wish to continue to speak?
Item number 1 is on the agenda today. It's one of the liens—there are many liens that are on the agenda today from building and safety. Building and safety, the guys over here and Charles in the big red vest usually process these liens. I've been yammering on endlessly about how there are so many in CD7, but this week, there are eight particular liens in CD8. And my heart is pinched by this, because CD8, the average wage in CD8, according to the Chamber of Commerce thing that was handed out at the meeting when we were celebrating, is $22,000. In CD7, where they're not doing that great, they're $15,000 below the average, it's 44. So this is a heartbreaking idea, because here we're collecting $18,000 off of residents who may be very close to being pushed out of their homes as-is, which is a heartbreaker, if I may. And it's a policy problem, and it ties in with item number 16, where Bonin is looking to do some traffic studies to increase the way we cite people. And I know that this body is in trouble—
So you're off-topic. You just forfeit all your time again. You went to item 16. You mentioned item 16.
The liens are on properties in CD8.
You went to item 16, though.
Tabulate. No, hold on, sir. That's not fair. I will continue.
Not fair is that you're wasting the public's time, not our time, by not sticking to the rules that you know. You speak at every single meeting, so—that was your final meeting? That was your final warning. I warned you three times, you went off. So you have one more minute for general public comment.
There are a lot—no, I'm on item 49, sir, and I will—
One more minute for general public comment, and we'll ask you to sit down.
Okay, this is a rough room. Boy, I'll tell you, that's the ADA lawsuit—
Stick to the rules, please.
—that yesterday was settled—not settled, but was re-discussed for judgment obligation bonds up in Budget and Finance. You know, and it's unfortunate you were asking questions, that we are going to be taking on a $70 million judgment obligation bond that's going to cost the public $100 million. We are facing a $250 million overage, but every year, our liability is going from 60 to 120 million going forward, and the solution by this body is, whoops, I guess we're underbudgeting. The public doesn't feel that way. The public wants—and in New Year's Day, my brother Joshua Previn and I wrote—the Attorney Tax Dollar Privilege in the Daily News. Why? Because this body should not be in the back room doing anything, sir, and you shouldn't be shutting people out like you did in Budget and Finance when I tried to speak on the item in the Record on that particular date. And, Mr. Marquis Harris Dawson, I understand and feel your pain in your district with people who don't have enough. You ought to waive those liens, and you ought to get your colleagues to do the same. It's only three or four million dollars. You've got 7,000 cases. You are pouring money all over the place, including into defense for people who need it.
Thank you very much. Your time is up for the meeting. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here once again. All right, next speaker, please. John, you've got items 1, 41, 42, 43, and 44.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org and at JayWalshConfidential. Number 1, HollywoodHighlands.org, this is a protest building and safety. You do a good job on building and safety. When you do a good job, I'm the first one. I'm not here. You don't give me a chance to speak. You don't give me a chance to speak.
You're not on topic. You're not going to get another warning, John.
I'd love to tell you what a good job you're doing, but you keep interrupting me. 41, this is Rent Eschel, another good job. Now we get into 42. This is the Hollywood Walk of Fame. It is a sink—it is a messhole. It is a shithole. Somebody took a shit next to Donald Trump's star, and no one noticed the shit, which gives you an idea how bad the Boulevard is. Amy Adams. And I like your giving awards to African-Americans and to people I never heard of, because if I never heard of them, then they're probably well-known among the people who walk on Hollywood Boulevard. And what we want to do in installation of New Edition Hollywood Walk—I want people—I know most people who live here never go there because it's too dangerous. I mean, it's very dangerous on Hollywood Walk of Fame.
Stick to the agenda, please.
I'm talking about installation of Amy Adams' star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. But I'm going to go into my—I don't need every single second. I don't need every single second. I'm going to go into my one-minute of public comment. And I won't mention golden showers, because children probably are watching, and they wouldn't know what a golden shower is. Ask the president-elect what a golden shower is. Yes, on measure S. That's what they're afraid of up here. They don't have enough money to pay their bills, and they want the Olympics to show up here. They don't have the money. Everything is falling apart in the city. The mayor almost never shows up in this building. And Herb, although you don't have the money to pay your bills, just put in a $1 million new system so that the camera can zoom in on Herb and suck him off, photographically speaking. I'm telling you, I've never seen an ego like Herb Wesson's, how much money he spends. Go to hell.
Thank you very much. Dan, come on up. Dan, you've got items 42, 43, 44, and 45.
Not the lawsuits?
And 49.
Thank you.
42, 43, 44, 45, and 49.
Good stuff. Councilmembers, a few weeks ago, you had to borrow money with bonds to settle wrongful death lawsuits. You had to borrow, I think, $8 million. And today, you have other non-wrongful death lawsuits that you're going to settle, car accidents, liability, things of that nature. I think, given the fact that the city is probably going to lose hundreds of millions of dollars in federal funding very soon, I think you need to tell the residents of the city whether or not the city can afford to settle today's lawsuits. We have a right to know how broke the city is, and if you're borrowing $8 million with a budget of $9 billion, you need to tell us somebody. Please tell us, can you even afford to pay cash today for today's legal settlements? Because it's sad that you had to borrow $8 million with a $9 billion budget, but if you have to borrow money to settle car accidents, you need to tell the public what's going on, especially Mr. Kocorian. Tell us if the city can afford the settlements that you're going to make today. Regarding the Hollywood Walk of Fame, I agree with Mr. Walsh. It is a crap-hole, and if tourism is so important to the city of Los Angeles, and you're trying to get the Olympics and you're trying to get the NFL, please explain to us why the Walk of Fame looks so gosh darn awful. Because weather and tourism is all the city has. Weather and tourism is all the city has. I'm going to go—I'm going to go right into my general now. Councilmembers, I have the best—the most viewed article on City Watch L.A. right now. It's called "How Best Friends Animal Society Rips Off L.A. With City Hall's Blessing." Today, you're going to vote to renew Best Friends deal with the city of Los Angeles. The taxpayers are subsidizing Best Friends, and their tax return for the past five years is linked in my article. They took in a third of a billion dollars in the past five years. So why are the taxpayers subsidizing a nonprofit that took in $313 million over the past five years? That's not Best Friends worth. That is their income for the past five years. And read my article, and you will see how they have done intake. They have generated fake impound numbers. I have the internal communications linked in my article. You can see, they generated false impound numbers, and they falsified with the city 8,807 adoptions. Thank you.
Thank you. You have one more minute for general public comment?
Oh, okay.
No, you—I'm sorry. We already gave you the minute.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Thanks, Dan. Arnold Sachs, come on up. Sergeant Morris, if you can please come on up, too.
My time has started. Should I start speak—you didn't say to start, sir. Should I start speaking? I guess I should start speaking. I held items 1, 37, 49, and 41, and 1 and 49 actually are pretty much the same thing. 49 is a closed-session item regarding the Fair Housing Act, and 1 refers to inspections by housing authority. And so in yesterday's newspaper, there was an article about your having to pay for legal settlements, and they mentioned the $200 million you lost in the housing ADA compliant lawsuit. But you never sued any of the developers. You never sued any of the nonprofits, and the city didn't build any houses. And so now the city has this HHH bond, where they're going to create funding to build houses, but the city's not going to build houses. And how are you going to—what are you going to have in effect to prepare and keep the city from falling victim to another lawsuit? Why aren't you going after any of the nonprofits? Why aren't you going after any of the builders? And how do you know who's doing the inspecting for the ADA compliant? And Mayor Spaghetti mentioned that the next time housing comes up, it'll be ADA compliant. So how will that affect the housing for the homeless? Don't know. The assessments that you charge for the lighting districts, is there a mechanism that allows the assessments to be used for something else? How do you maintain the fact that those assessments belong in the— maintain the fact that those assessments belong in a neighborhood? I would point out that this story from the LA, the Daily Breeze, from August 22, 2015, mentions that there were 800, over 880,000 pieces of property in Los Angeles, the city of Los Angeles. And it refers to the county's 1996 and 1992 parks proposition, which is assessment on the property. So you say 800,000 properties times $80 is $64 million. 6.4 million dollars, 64. You ever take a few hundred thousand, who cares? So a couple of weeks ago, the city of Norwalk got $12 million for its golf course, and the LA Zoo, a couple of weeks ago, got $186,000 for its golf course. Now, my math may be wrong, but Norwalk has no idea and no way its property equals that of the city of Los Angeles. So how do you have control over money that's assessed to the county? You don't. And why not? How come LA is so park-poor when it has 800,000 pieces of property, and it's getting $80 a pop for each piece? No answers. That's good to know. And then, so we talked about fair housing, and we talked about that. Do I get my public comment a minute now, sir, or should I wait?
Yeah, go ahead and take your one minute of public comment.
My one minute of public comment. Kind of fascinating. If you don't have anybody who's running for office, doesn't utter the words to you, the city's general plan, then they're full of crap. This is a story from 4/14/16, "Revising LA's Building Plans." Mayor Spaghetti said, "Revising the general plans for the city will take till 2026." Well, how are you going to involve building housing for homeless if you don't have a revised general plan? There's 30 projects going up in downtown Los Angeles, and people are worried about Project S. Speaking of Project S, there was a lawsuit filed, and it named Beacon Economics in the lawsuit as being a paid political consultant, somewhat. And so, in yesterday's newspaper, there was a story about LA and the Olympics that mentions Beacon Economics. How is that possible?
Thank you. Thank you very much. You're over your time. Thank you. All right. All right, Brian Barajas. Welcome back, Brian. We haven't seen you in a while.
Well, I'm not one for people sucking my ass, so... Let me just reference one thing and one thing only. What has happened to us? Let me just make it very clear. What we have in the domain of physics, I should say, because people miss out on this question. What we are is independent human beings. And let me just say this. If Trump wants to call out a fascist system, which he did today, then that's his obligation to do. I think our domain to reflect is what are we, as individuals, are doing to destroy that fascist system, which Donald Trump has called out? And to say that is very simple for me, at least, because I do not want a friend who does not acknowledge the fact that we've been living in a fascistic system with Bush and Obama.
Thank you. Mr. Dogg, Mr. Zuma Dogg, and your items are Items 1, 41, and 49.
Yes, and I appreciate having the actual council president for the big dog, Zuma Dogg, mayoral candidate. Look for my name on the ballot and go to LA City Mayor 2017. Herb, go to LA City Mayor 2017. I hope to have a cordial relationship and racketeering and collusion with you, side by side. Now, let's talk about, oh, yes, time to talk about Venice Community Housing Corporation. Mike Bonin is aware of through my many emails, because we're talking about the Fair Housing Act, the closed session, about legal counsel, about litigation, and I can tell you regarding HUD. And I know a lot about reasons to litigate the Venice Community Housing Corporation. Basically, I've been doing undercover for 10 years as HUD for Venice Community Housing, and I need the FBI to become involved. Here's how it works. Federal government gives subsidies to the Venice Community Housing Corporation. Let's say, for example, for carpeting and for maintenance of carpeting. Well, gee, hi, I'm the director Becky Dennison, or Steve Clare, or whoever. I'm going to take the carpeting out. Then I still get the subsidy for the maintenance, but I'm not maintenance-ing it. Let's say you're getting federal money to provide shelter services, okay, the social service element of the HUD housing. You're paying counselors. You've got positions to fill. Well, gee, I bet you, I guarantee, if you go through the audit, you find out that there's counselors that haven't seen any of their clients for over a year. So you're paying for social services for the social workers, and they're not seeing anybody. What's going on with the money? What's going on with the money? The maintenance of the buildings, okay? What's going on with the maintenance for the buildings for the HUD? I know at Venice Community Housing Corporation in Venice, it's not being used as it should be. Okay? So I would like the FBI, and believe me, the litigation is going to be from Zuma Dogg in a lawsuit against Venice Community Housing Corporation for their racketeering and misuse and abuse of federal funds, not providing these services for the residents and for the building. Thank you. This is why I'm running for mayor of Los Angeles. It's because of the people that need housing, and then when they do get housing, how they are treated. The whole HUD housing thing's just a big F-ing racket to get the money for the contracts. We need this thing audited, and then the money disappears, okay? And the money for buildings, you know what? The money for the buildings that they get. We all know about this, and I'm pretty furious about it. That's why I'm running for mayor of Los Angeles. ZumaDog.com, Z-U-M-A-D-O-G-G, twice the G that absentee do-nothing Eric Garcetti could ever dream to be.
Thank you.
You want your one minute?
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Dogg, you want your one minute for general public comment now? Your one minute. Okay. Okay, Zuma Dogg, I'm running for mayor of Los Angeles. Thank you very much. ZumaDog.com. And now we've got to talk about a little free speech. First of all, there's something called Rule 93, and we have some candidates that are running for mayor, and the city attorney, please pay attention, and I'm talking about Mike Fuhrer. Rule 93, the camera must be focused on the speaker and their visual graphics. Look right now. Do you see the speaker speaking? No, you don't, because it's called a long shot. It's called editing. It says in Rule 93, "You may not attempt to censor the meetings and edit them by giving long shots at the public and close-ups of you guys." So I want the people to know that these cowardly, do-nothing, racketeering, corrupt losers put the close-ups on them, okay? And then when it comes time for the people, they put the far shot, so you don't know who it is. I'm a legendary icon. My face is a brand name in this town. Zoom in on it, please.
All right, thank you very much. Jaclyn Richardson.
November the 8th was the official voter day, but they had six to eight voter days before then. It was advertised on Channels 2 and 4. And you can verify that with the county board of supervisors, and also with City Hall, the people that pay the bills. There were between four and eight extra days. I believe the holographs were voting that day. I don't really know. I'm just guessing, and sometimes guesses are lies. Assume it was holographs voting. And they accused Vladimir Putin of interfering with the election process. If so, I believe he would have told the holographs what to do, or he was checking to see what the holographs were doing. The day Kobe Bryant retired, he had a meeting in this judge's chamber, in this chamber, and outside, another man, before Kobe Bryant came outside, another man was speaking, telling the holographs or foreigners what to do, ambulances, and parking. You make sure you don't, you follow the rules.
Great, thank you very much. All right, Michael Graham, general public comment, followed by Oscar Mohammed, and Sean, all for general public comment only.
Hello, everyone. Good to see you here. Has my time started already?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, my name is Michael, and I'm here because I'm requesting for public hearing and the appeal of the incorporated District 2 City of Watts. I am asking for, as well as, an approval by the Los Angeles City Council that Michael D. Graham Jr. become the executive director of authority and resolution, industrial advancement and stabilization of the city once there is a repeal of the unincorporated city. Reason being is to acknowledge and recognize resources that cause domestic violence, violence, and vandalism, as well as homeless, and by assisting widows and orphans, and combining with state-of-the-art innovation and cutting-edge technology to the healthcare industry.
All right, thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
We have a broken political system that cannot be, cannot be replaced. We need to bring a new kind of government in. The United States Department of Justice disrespects the obligation for justice with minorities. End the homelessness on downtown Skid Row. We need more affordable housing. Give the homeless a ticket and a lunch sack and send them back where they come from. The United States treat their minority outcast and human. We need an independent review board over the law enforcement. The police will come first, the bullets come second. We should end the fraudulent, fraudulent funding for homelessness. The prophets of doom decline in America in. 760 black Americans got killed in Chicago last year without accountability. But we're going to take our freedom to another country and put our parts in other people's land. We disrespect our, we do not go by the Constitution that governs us. We should not have different peoples in our community. Black communities should be a black community.
Thank you very much. Sean, how you doing? Happy New Year, Sean.
Happy New Year, Mitch. How you been? Yes, Happy New Year. Wish my fans a Happy New Year from all over LA. LA needs to, LA's going, I heard that LA is going broke. They need to start, they need to stop borrowing money if they can't pay the money back to the city. I'd like it to adjourn this meeting in memory of Helen Cunningham, please. Her husband owned a mortuary. Her funeral is tomorrow. Helen Cunningham, she passed away over the Christmas holiday. I got a message from Mr. Donald, I got a message from Mr. Donald Trump. He better not deport the good people. He should leave them the F alone. There's too many. Just deport the, that are committing crime. I don't, I'd like Donald Trump to leave the good people alone. I hope he does it well for our president. I'm going to miss Michelle Obama. Her birthday is Tuesday. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes general public comment. We're going to go ahead and go over to Item 12 for Mr. Huizar, called "Special."
Mr. President and colleagues, today's a very exciting day for the health and well-being of many Angelenos in the city of Los Angeles, as we pass the final ordinance to make it mandatory for all farmer's markets throughout the city to accept EBT. And first, I would like to thank Councilwoman Martinez as the former chair, and Councilmember Ofero as the current chair, for spearheading this through their committees and being valuable allies in getting this through council. I would also like to thank the Los Angeles Community Action Network and the Los Angeles Food Policy Council for being a great partner and resource throughout this. This certainly wouldn't have been done without you guys who brought this idea to the council to act. And I also want to thank the Bureau of Street Services and the Department of Building and Safety for helping us find a way to enforce this new policy. You know, the city of Los Angeles has often been said that we have neighborhoods that are food deserts, where it is difficult to find fresh and healthy food. Local farmer's markets are a great way of bringing fresh produce into these communities, and sometimes the only option for members of these communities. What we will do today is allow members these opportunities now. And neighborhoods facing food desert conditions are predominantly, unfortunately, low-income communities, and studies have shown that these same communities suffer a disproportionate burden of chronic diseases related to obesity and poor diet. Increased access to fresh fruits and vegetables through farmer's markets can help alleviate diet-related chronic conditions. No child should be denied access to foods that will benefit their health and ensure a strong and healthy life, no matter where they live in the city. The CalFresh program improves the healthy and well-being of its recipients by providing them with a monthly allocation for food purchases. These benefits can be used to purchase food in locations that accept EBT cards. We have an opportunity today to make one small change that will affect the lives of thousands of people. By making the acceptance of EBTs at farmer's markets mandatory, we ensure equal access to fresh foods through farmer's markets, no matter what part of the city these individuals live. So this is a great day for us, and what makes me confident in asking for your eye vote today, colleagues, is that with the work of our allies that made this possible, we have achieved nearly 100% volunteer compliance rate at most farmer's markets. By making it mandatory, we will ensure that we don't slip that 100%. So thank you so much. I ask for your eye vote on this very important matter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, colleagues, with seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on this item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Great, thank you very much. That is approved. Next items, please. Take 38 from yesterday's agenda. Next, for Ms. Martinez.
And Mr. President, for clarification, the council file number is 13-0487-sub3.
Yes, thank you very much.
So, Mr. President, this is only a technical amendment to change the dollar amount to $19,000. Okay?
Okay, so with that, that's your motion, and we're looking for a second on that? Mr. Corret, seconds right here. All right, so we have a second on that. We'll go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
That is, item is approved. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we'll go into the next items, please. Okay, we'll go ahead and take Item 30. We have one card, and we'll go ahead and take the one speaker card on 30, Pete White.
Good morning, and thank you. I commented on this yesterday, just a couple of additional items. And so, the chief legislative analyst report has five or six options on this item. The option that communities are really interested in is Option 5, the scrapping of the entire process of the Board of Rights review hearing, and the creation of a new Board of Rights. I will simply, in lieu of commenting, pass out a letter that we wrote yesterday for your review. Thank you very much. Who's got it? Somebody got it. Somebody got it? All right, that's it.
All right, having no other speakers on the queue, I believe we had a amendment that has already been circulated on this as well. It's been posted. Mr. West.
You know, thank you, Mr. President and, and members. What we have decided to do is to move these two options forward. There will be conversations that we will have where it relates to both of them, and there'll be another hearing of the Rules Committee that will deal with these. And I, I hope when it comes time to ask this body to vote for something, that I've able to work out some consensus. So, I am asking that we make this request to the city attorney's office so that we can keep this conversation going, because in order to make the March ballot, we need, you know, it's not like we have a lot of time. But one thing that I did want to say publicly and on the record is that I will be submitting a letter, creating a committee. On this committee will sit Mr. Corretts, who is the Chair of Personnel, Mr. Englander, who is the Chair of Public Safety, and myself as the Chair of Rules. And we're going to review this entire process. And that will include community hearings and things of that nature. I do want us to move forward now, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to put something on the March ballot, because I do want to begin a change in this process. And I am, I just refuse to believe that civilians cannot participate, and whenever there's civilian participation, it is better. And so, that's one of the things that I want to try to get at. Now, it's been elusive. Give us more time to work on it. Hopefully, I'll be able to recommend something that elevates everyone's comfort level. But at the end of the day, I want to go on record stating that this city, this city council, will have a conversation on a committee, ad hoc committee, that I will chair, that will have the Chair of Personnel and the Chair of Public Safety. And it's something that I think we will do hearings throughout the city of Los Angeles. So, I'm asking for an eye vote as we move both of these options forward.
Thank you very much. And, and colleagues, with that, and I support the ad hoc and taking this citywide, this is a major discussion that needs to take place. We certainly will have the ordinance or the ballot language back from the city attorney for another opportunity and looking at specific language. So, this is simply asking the city attorney to start drafting so we can have a working document. And with that, I'll ask for your eye vote as well. Let's go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll go ahead and send that forth with, without objection. That'll be the order. Next items, please.
Mr. President, in the meantime, the Department of Building Safety reports that items one C and one I on today's agenda should be continued to January twenty-fifth. Again, that's one C and one I.
Okay, those will be continued without objection. That'll be the order. Next items, please.
Mr. President, I believe that leaves items thirty-one, thirty-seven, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, and forty-five for consideration.
That's correct. Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll on the balance of those remaining items. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, that brings us to item one. The remaining items within there are items one...
We don't have to read them all, because we already went through it. So, we can go, open the roll on those remaining items on one, and there's no other cards on those. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, those are approved. Next items, please.
Mr. President, that would bring council to items forty-six through forty-nine. They're items scheduled for closed session.
Okay, I'll defer to the chair, Mr. Corrent.
Mr. President, items forty-six through forty-eight are city attorney recommendations regarding settlements that could be heard in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Item forty-nine should be considered in closed session.
Okay, and on forty-seven and forty-eight, we're gonna do the same thing we did previously with the recommendation on the judgment obligation bond, to take that as a separate vote. So, we'll ask, we'll just go ahead and vote on each one of these individually. And if, I can ask the city attorney, did you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah.
Mr. President, for item forty-six, in the case entitled Stephen Ruiz versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to reject the plaintiff's offer of settlement.
Great, so let's go ahead and open the roll on forty-six. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, now forty-seven, if you want to read that and has two votes, please.
Yes, sir. For item forty-seven, in the case entitled Kim Nguyen versus City of Los Angeles et al, there is a recommendation to expend up to three point five million dollars in settlement.
Okay, so the first vote will be for that, and the second vote will be for the payment portion. So, if you can open the roll on the first portion, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Okay, and the second part? You can read the second part, please. I'll read the second part. So, the second part is going to be on the recommendation to add that to the judgment obligation bond portion. And so, we can vote on that separately if you can open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes, one no.
All right, thank you very much. And next item, please.
That brings us to item forty-eight, in the case entitled David Aguilar et al. versus City of Los Angeles et al., Barbara Kausch et al. versus City of Los Angeles, and Bo Maxson et al. versus City of Los Angeles. There is a recommendation to expend up to eight point five million dollars in settlement.
All right, colleagues, excuse me, Mr. Previn? Mr. Previn, you're, you're disrupting this meeting, you're yelling out, you're standing in the middle of the aisle by the, I don't understand what you're doing, sir. Was there an issue? And, no, you're still disrupting the meeting. We're gonna wait for you to either sit down or be escorted out. Pick which one. Okay, go ahead, you can be escorted out. You're still disrupting the meeting. I gave you an opportunity to sit down. Please show them out. Thank you very much, Previn. Thank you. Mr. Previn, I asked you to please leave. I, I gave you three chances. I've already warned you. You were done, please, we'll see you later. We'll see you tomorrow, I'm sure, or Friday. We're gonna wait till you leave. Sergeants, please go ahead and show them out. Thank you very much. You continue to disrupt this meeting. You've been asked several times. You know the rules. You're here every single council meeting, you know all the rules. So, now we're waiting on you, Mr. Previn, to leave council chambers. Do you think you can behave and follow the rules for the remaining portion of the meeting? No, okay, you're shaking your head no. Go, go ahead, please. Sergeants, can you please escort him out of council chambers? You're just disrupting this meeting. We're in the middle of voting on very important issues. You're at the podium, you're, you're yelling across the room to the sergeant-at-arms, disrupting the meeting. You shouldn't even be at the podium, and it doesn't make any sense. So, you're taking the time out of the general public, who's here to hear deliberations and the people's business. Mr. Previn, we're waiting on you. You're continuing to disrupt this meeting by not leaving. You've been asked to leave for disrupt, for various disruptions and multiple disruptions of this meeting. All right, do not yell out, please. Do not yell out. Mr. Previn?
For the record, he's continuing to yell out.
Yeah, he's continuing to yell out, just for the record. Thank you, Mr. Previn. I'd like to continue on with the work of this body. Still yelling out and standing there, please. Thank you, Mr. Previn. All right, I apologize to the audience and who's here today that had to wait for that disruption. With that, let's go ahead and continue. I believe we're on forty-eight. First half of forty-eight, so we can go, open the roll on forty-eight. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
The second half again on the funding source as a recommendation. And so, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes, one no.
Okay, thank you very much. City Attorney has something to read in to the record.
For two of the approved settlements that we just did, Nguyen versus City and Case Aguilar and Maxson v. City, the council found the settlements are the best interests of the city, and the city intends to make an interfund borrowing or advance from the reserve fund to pay the settlements on an interim basis, which loans or advances will be refunded or reimbursed with the proceeds of judgment obligation bond issue. A resolution regarding such intent was separately considered and adopted. Any issuance of judgment obligation bonds would require further council approval, which would be considered by council at a later date.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead, folks, and go into closed session on item forty-nine. And we have a representative from the mayor's office, if nobody objects to that. So, we'll ask everybody to please step out of council chambers if you're here and not a city employee, particularly on this case, or from the city attorney's office, or staff of the council.
Okay, you've edited?
Yeah.
Okay, and welcome back. We concluded the closed session and there's nothing to announce from the closed session. And so I want to thank the folks that waited outside for that. Mr. Clerk, what's left on the agenda?
Mr. President, Council has motions for posting and referral.
Oh, those are posted and referred?
Desk is clear.
All right. Do we have any announcements, colleagues? Looking around the horseshoe? Seeing none? We do have adjourning motions, so if we can get everybody in council to please rise for adjourning motions. And we'll start off with Mr. Buscagno for an adjourning motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, the city of Los Angeles suffered an incredible loss during the break. Michael Justice, incredible dedicated photojournalist. He died when a two-seater helicopter he was photographing from suddenly lost control and nosedived into the water. He was on assignment for the Port of Los Angeles photographing three cruise ships as they departed the port. And we are showing some credible images and photos that he took over the years. Michael Justice was born in 1955 in Torrance, started his career in 1979 with the Daily Breeze front page photo of the Mobile Oil Refinery explosion. He went on to become a staff photographer at the Los Angeles Herald Examiner, and after the Herald Examiner closed in 1989, his photos regularly appeared in the Wall Street Journal, National Geographic Adventurer, Life, Newsweek, Time Magazine, and many other international publications. He spent the last decade servicing corporate clients. In addition to the Port of Los Angeles, his clients included LAX, California United Terminal, China Shipping, Maersk Inc., BNSF Railroad, Waste Management, the San Pedro Chamber of Commerce, McDonald's, Microsoft, and the Los Angeles Police Department. Michael grew up in Torrance and lived in San Pedro where he and his photography are well-known and well-respected. He learned his craft at Art Center College of Design in Pasadena, Cal State Long Beach, and the Brooks Institute of Photography. Michael loved adventure more than anything and was happiest when he was traveling with his camera. He worked in more than 40 countries. India and Cuba were his favorite destinations, and he was set to revisit Cuba in February. In addition to work, Michael embarked on a number of personal projects. He produced a book project called Pilgrims of Faith, where he documented the powerful global ritual of pilgrims that can send rural villagers who may have never ventured from their homes. An epic journeys of thousands of miles. Much of his work for the book focused on India, Israel, and Tibet. Michael also produced stellar portraits of this century's icons. He photographed Mother Teresa a few weeks before her death. He also photographed George Burns, Willie Nelson, Carole King, Gordon Lightfoot, John Lee Hooker, and Judy Collins, to name a few. As a contract photographer for the Port of Los Angeles, I got to see Michael frequently and was lucky to be a subject of many of his photographs. I would see him at an annual lobster festival and at this year's inaugural Fleet Week. And just a year ago, Michael photographed Mayor Garcetti and I touring the largest ship ever to visit the Port of Los Angeles, the Benjamin Franklin. He was a friend, a neighbor, a fellow San Pedrin, and he was a person filled with joy and inspiration, and his energy and enthusiasm always showed in his demeanor in his photographs. He was a staple in our community and he will surely be missed. Ironically, Michael, who started his photography career on the front page of the Daily Breeze, also tragically ended it on the front page of the same newspaper. Memorial is being held this Friday at 5:00 PM at the Porcacal Restaurant in San Pedro. He was a true friend of many, and he will sorely be missed. And to Michael, rest in peace. May your photographs live forever in our history. Thank you, colleagues.
Well done, Steve.
Thank you. And I think we all saw that on the news with Brandemere being interviewed on every single news channel and how close they were as well. So our thoughts to him too. Mr. Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Matthew Redman. Matt Redman was born in Arlington, Virginia, attended Washington Lee High School, and received a Bachelor's of Arts degree from the University of Pennsylvania and a Master's from Temple University. In October of 1982, Matt responded to the gay cancer epidemic by turning his talents and his energy outward and joined Nancy Freckling, Irv Monroe, and Max Drew at an emergency meeting at the Los Angeles Gay and Lesbian Community Services Center to take action on what was then called GRID, or Gay-Related Immunodeficiency Disease, as AIDS was then referred to. A telephone hotline was set up and operated from a closet in the Los Angeles Gay and Lesbian Community Service Center to answer questions from a concerned and frightened community. In 1983, over the vociferous objections of the San Francisco AIDS Foundation and the Gay and Lesbian Services Center, Matt fought to establish a separate organization where everyone needing help or information would feel comfortable. And in February, along with Nancy, Irv, and the other original board members, incorporated AIDS Project Los Angeles, APLA, which offers services and programs to over 11,000 people every year. In June of 2015, Matt stood right there with Michael and I and others, joining us here in the chambers as we recognized him as one of our honorees during LGBT Heritage Month for his exceptional achievements and dedication to improve the quality of life for the LGBT community. Matt is survived by his brother Brian Redman, sister-in-law Debbie Redman, niece Rachel Redman Levin, and her husband Aaron Levin, his niece Samantha Redman, and his cat Mickey. Matthew passed away on Tuesday, December 27, 2016, leaving legions of admirers who know of his importance in the overall sweep of the AIDS crisis and pandemic over the last 35-plus years now. He will be remembered for his talent, his commitment, his tenacity, and his kindness. May Matt Redman rest in peace.
Sure. Let's go ahead and add Councilmember Bond into that as well. Mr. Weiser?
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, on behalf of Councilmember Sadio and myself, I would ask that we adjourn today's meeting in memory of Jonathan Sanchez, Associate Publisher and COO of Eastern Group Publications. Jonathan passed away December 23 at the age of 64 after a short battle with cancer. He was a loving husband, father, grandfather, friend, and confidant to many, an advocate for the Latino community he loved so much, and for the Latino-owned small businesses he worked so hard to give a voice to. One of nine children, Jonathan was born August 31, 1952, to Juanita Beltran Sanchez and Jose Vicente Sanchez. He was a lifelong Angelino who spent most of his childhood and adult life in the northeast Los Angeles communities of Highland Park and Mount Washington. Together with his wife of three-plus decades, EGP publisher Dolores Sanchez, they established a highly respected chain of 11 bilingual community newspapers serving east, northeast, and southeast Los Angeles County. Before joining EGP in 1979, Sanchez was art director at The Bloom Agency, a full-service advertising agency that also published monthly magazines. Jonathan attended UCLA and completed journalism programs at the Amos Tuck School of Business Administration and the Poynter Institute for Media Studies. In his capacity as EGP Associate Publisher and CEO, among many other duties, Jonathan oversaw the business side of the family-owned and operated newspaper group, including advertising, client, and government relations. His many past professional affiliations include founding member and board member of the Los Angeles Latino Chamber of Commerce, founding president of the California Hispanic Publishers Association, vice president and founding member of the National Federation of Hispanic-Owned Newspapers, founding member of the New California Media, which later became New America Media, member of the Latin Business Association, member of the Latino Health Coalition, and member of the Latino Peace Officers Association. Jonathan was appointed by former Governor Pete Wilson to the Small Business Development Board of the California Trade and Commerce Agency and the California Inspection Maintenance Review Committee. He was the founder and president of the Eastern Group Foundation, a nonprofit organization dedicated to family literacy and community volunteerism. The EGP Foundation's Letter to Santa program benefited more than 90,000 disadvantaged children and their families. Jonathan is survived by his wife Dolores, daughters Diana Bianca Preciado and her husband Arturo Preciado, brothers David Miguel Juan and Pedro, and sisters Maria Teresa Delia and Rose. Dolores' children Gloria Alvarez and husband Mike Alvarez, their four children and two grandchildren, Michael Sanchez and wife Pristine, and their five children and four grandchildren, Sarah Ramos and her husband John Ramos and their three children, and Joe Sanchez III and his wife Carla, their eight children, spouses, and nearly two dozen grandchildren and great-grandchildren. On a personal note, I can tell you that Jonathan was a great man. I attended his memorial service a few days ago, and it was just a great sight to see so many people speaking about what a great businessperson he was and someone who cared a lot about Los Angeles, but also just the individual he was. He was surprisingly there. Three or four people found out that they each received a coat at different times in their lives from him because he was like literally willing to take off the shirt off his back and, in this instance, take off the coat off his back and give it to somebody. We would truly understand the impact of EGP News as we move forward because this is a newspaper that tells the stories in a local neighborhood when other major newspapers and television do not cover local neighborhood stories. This newspaper would go in the trenches and sometimes in the red year after year, but they were willing and wanting to tell the stories. On top of that, back in the '70s, this was a newspaper that, not covering many of the Latino issues in the city, people would go to EGP News to find out what was happening on the east side for our Latino community. So he will be missed, a great person, someone who was a confidant also to many east side elected politicians, as many testified at his memorial service. May he rest in peace.
All right. Seeing no other adjourning motions, I do have another announcement, actually, that I wanted to make. For those of you who remember seeing and are aware of the Fallen Officer Memorial Wall that was put together by Eagle and Badge in partnership with the Los Angeles Police Protective League, they actually have been working on commissioning a trailer that is pretty spectacular. Will take this mobile wall as it has throughout Los Angeles, and some of you remember seeing it at PAB last year, and also at the Greek, in front of the Greek Theater and many other places. It's pretty spectacular. But now it's here again today with the, finally, the trailer that Eagle and Badge was able to put together and still raising some much-needed funds for. You're all invited to take a look at it, take some pictures with it, and go visit it. It's out under the bridge on Main Street. So everybody should have some time or take some opportunity today. I believe it's going to be there till about 2:00 today, and you can go take a look at it there. So thank you so much for that, allowing me to give another announcement. With that, we are adjourned. Be safe. Thank you.